...order at 7:03 PM on June the 2nd, 2011. Please join me in standing as James Goode leads the board's opening prayer.
Our loving Father, we are so thankful for this beautiful day that you blessed us with. We're so mindful as this school year comes to a close of all of the accomplishments and the success that we've had in the classroom. We especially are so grateful for all of the educators and administrators and all of the effort that they have expended throughout this year to make us a quality educational system. And especially, Father, at this time, we're so thankful for the many people that we have the privilege and opportunity to recognize and to congratulate them on their success throughout this school year, whether it be academically, athletically, the fine arts, and all of these areas, Father. We thank you for all of the students and all of those who are active participants. Father, we ask especially that you'll be with us through the further activities of this meeting, that you'll give us always wisdom and understanding that all of our decisions and actions will glorify your name and help us always to focus on our students, that we'll look to their academic success as our number one goal. For this is our prayer, amen.
Amen. Please remain standing as Frank Shore leads the board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. As a district, we dedicate all of our efforts and resources to prepare all students to meet the Texas Assessment of Knowledge and Skills, the TACTS test, at the proficient or the commended level and to graduate college-ready or workforce-ready without remediation. This board uses this vision to guide all of our deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board tonight in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in closed session as stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the Open Meetings Law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, or real estate. For the record, all board members are present tonight. We do constitute a quorum and can conduct business on behalf of the district. We'll move on to Agenda Item 1B, which is to consider all matters relating to the May 14th, 2011 election of the members of Board of Trustees. As you all know, we did have an election, and this will include the swearing-in of these two board members.
Yes, Ms. Jevon, and we have Ms. Sandy Tarski from the law firm of Walsh &amp; Anderson tonight to do the official honors, and so I'm going to hand it over to her, and there'll be some other kind of paperwork to wrap up from there as well, so.
Want them to come down front?
Yes. Right there, and then we'll bring more members down.
Good evening. How are you, sir, Ms. Klein? Thank you all for allowing me to be here tonight. Dr. Burns asked me to come, and just say a few words to you all, just kind of about the process that one goes through from the date of election until you're finally seated here in your seat and you're able to carry on the business of the district. So I want to say a couple of words on that, but first, I want to congratulate you. I was a former board member myself, and I remember the relief of getting through Election Day, knowing the votes were counted, and that I was going to be back in my seat or taking my seat and able to serve the students in the district where I live. So you all are to be commended. I do remember that it was not the highest-paying job I've ever had, but it was the most rewarding experience truly that I've ever had. So it's awesome that you all devote your time to the kids in the district, and I know everyone appreciates that very much. What I wanted to say, first of all, mostly for the public, I guess, is just a couple of comments about the steps that we've gone through to get here today. The election was on May 14th. At the end of the day, the polls closed and the votes were counted. The next step after that is to come back to the Board of Trustees to canvass the election results, and that took place on May the 25th, I understand. And you two were the ones with the votes that earned one of these seats up here with your fellow team members, so congratulations again to you on that. The thing that happens after the canvassing, the election results, is that certificates of election are issued to you, and I understand that's already happened. And then there's an officer statement that you all have to sign and take, and I understand that's happened, so that brings us here tonight. The next step is Ms. Scrivener's going to issue the oath or affirmation of office to you, and at that point, these two individuals take their seat back among with the rest of the team and carry on the business of representing the students in Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. So again, congratulations to you, and I'll turn it over to Sharon.
If you'll please repeat after me, inserting your name. I solemnly swear
I, James Goode, solemnly swear
that I will faithfully execute the duties
that I will faithfully execute the duties
of the Office of School Board Trustee
of the Office of School Board Trustee
for the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District
for the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District
of the State of Texas
of the State of Texas
and will, to the best of my ability
and will, to the best of my ability
preserve, protect, and defend
preserve, protect, and defend
the Constitution and laws
the Constitution and laws
of the United States and of this state
of the United States and of this state
so help me God.
so help me God.
Thank you, Ms. Tarski. Moving on to Agenda Item 1C is the board reorganization, and for the reorganization of the board, I will turn the gavel over to Dr. Burns.
Thank you, Ms. Chaffin. Now, at this time, according to the board's standard of professional practice, we will take nominations from the board for the Office of President of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Board of Trustees. So I now open the floor for nominations. Mr. Shore.
I thought about nominating the person who I least liked for this position, but that's not this person. I'd like to nominate Nancy Klein as our next board president.
Under the Roberts Rules of Order, no second is required for nominations, but are there any other nominations for board president from the floor? Hearing none and seeing no indication of a second nomination, okay, we will now close the nominations.
If you lose, it's amazing.
So the nominations are now closed. All those in favor of Nancy Klein for the Office of Board President, please indicate by raising your hand. And Ms. Scrivener, for the record, that vote is unanimous. And now, it is my honor and privilege to turn it over to Ms. Klein, our new president, so.
I just wanted to send out a great big thank you to Lynn Chaffin for her two years of outstanding leadership in keeping the students at the forefront of everything we decided.
Thank you.
Okay, now I need some help.
Now, we're going to go to... Dee.
Oh, really?
Sure, too. Now, you're going to take nominations for next office.
Okay, so now we're doing nominations for the second office, which is Board Vice President. Let me see if it tells me what to say. Are there any nominations for Board Vice President?
I nominate James Goode.
Richard?
I nominate Karen Webb.
Under Roberts Rules of Order, no second is required for nominations. Are there any other nominations other than James and Karen from the floor? So, all those in favor of nominee James Goode for Board Vice President, please indicate by raising your hand. There's four votes for that, and all those in favor of nominee Karen Webb for Board Vice President, please indicate by raising your hand. That is two. That vote is four, and if I could add mine, which would be five, I don't know if that's right.
Yes.
In favor of James Goode, congratulations to James. Now, I open the floor for nominations to the position of Board Secretary. Mr. Shore?
I'd like to nominate Richard Fleming for Board Secretary.
Under Roberts Rules of Order, no second is required for nominations. Are there any other nominations for Board Secretary from the floor? James?
I nominate Nancy Watten.
Are there any other nominations for Board Secretary from the floor? Seeing none and hearing none, nominations are closed. All those in favor of nominee Richard Fleming for Board Secretary, please indicate by raising That is five votes in favor. All those in favor of nominee Nancy Watten for Board Secretary, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, Richard and Nancy. I don't know that this makes sense. It sounds like when Frank was sedentary.
We're innovative.
In the case I don't want the job. I'm not sure congratulations are in order. That vote is, Mr. Fleming had five, and he voted for Ms. Watten, and Ms. Watten had two, and she voted for Mr. Fleming. So I would now recognize Mr. Fleming as our new Board Secretary. Now, I open the floor for nominations to the position of Board Assistant Secretary.
I'll nominate Lynn Chaffin.
Lynn Chaffin has been nominated. Under Roberts Rules of Order, no second is required. Are there any other nominations for Board Assistant Secretary from the floor? Hearing none, seeing none, nominations are closed. All those in favor of Lynn Chaffin for Board Secretary, please indicate by raising your hand.
Assistant Secretary.
Yeah, Assistant Secretary. That is unanimous. Okay. Thank you. So now, we need to look at item number 1D, Review Update, Reaffirm Board Standards of Professional Practice. Did I believe that Ms. Chaffin may have posted this item?
This is... Yes, I did, thank you. This is an item that we have on our regular calendar to review and reaffirm our board operating procedures after each reorganization, so essentially, that will occur once a year after each election. And the purpose of this is an opportunity to review our procedures and how we have, as a body corporate, agreed that we will conduct business and see if there are any changes that might need to be made to that particular document. So at this point, it would be open for discussion if any board members wanted to make any changes or suggest any changes to the board operating procedures. Does it look to me like there are any, Ms. Klein? We need to... I would recommend, then, that since there are no recommended changes, that we reaffirm our current standing board standards of professional practice.
One second.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, all those in favor, all those opposed, unanimous. Is that this time we get to go into the part of our program where we get to recognize our special guest and announce him, Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Ms. Klein. It's certainly an honor tonight to have all of you here for a very special kind of end-of-the-year celebration. We have celebrations throughout the year and recognize lots of students throughout the year, but this time of year, we bring in the other recognitions of our, what we call, high achievement goal. We have high achievement, obviously, for academics, but we also believe that the arts and the athletics area are both critical components for students' successful education. So we're honored that you're here with us tonight. The good news is, we got so many, we've had to do it in two shifts, okay? So you're the first shift, so welcome, and we're glad you're here. We're going to do the fine arts recognitions first, and then we're going to give you a little time to be dismissed, and then we'll bring in athletics after that. You're more than welcome to stay for both, if that's the case, but we wanted to have it, seats for everybody as their part of the recognition happens tonight. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Jim McDaniel, our Executive Director of Fine Arts, to come forward, and what we're going to do is, he's going to give the recognition part, and then we will introduce all of those, and then he also has a presentation later that, again, we will invite you to stay if you will, but not necessarily is it a requirement, okay? And I would like to say that this ticket tonight is almost as hard to get as the ticket for Miami and Mavericks. Not quite, but almost as hard to get, so thank you for being here.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Could we go ahead and bring the Allstate students in?
Sharon.
That's great. Tonight, I have the honor of honoring our Allstate students. First, from Creekview High School Band, the directors are Preston Hazard and assistants Michael Jordan and Andrew Anker. We want to introduce first, and if you'll step forward, Jack Pena and his parents, Pam and Nick Pena. If you'll stand, if you're here. There's Pam. Jack is a senior at Creekview High School. He's a four-year Allstate student on bassoon and has made the Allstate Orchestra for all four years. This is his second year that Jack has been selected as the first chair bassoon for the Allstate Orchestra, meaning he is the best bassoonist in the state of Texas. Additionally, Jack is graduating fifth in his class, and he'll be attending Coburn Conservatory of Music in Los Angeles on a full-ride scholarship on bassoon. Next, from the Creekview High School Orchestra is Director Julia Blackstock and Assistant Eric Jones, and their Allstate student is Samantha Gu. If you want to step forward, and parents are Ms. Jennifer Wong and Dr. Gu, if they're Samantha is a sophomore at Creekview and is in the top 10% of her class. Samantha made the 13th chair violin this year, which is incredibly hard, as a sophomore in the Allstate Orchestra. She's a member of the Greater Dallas Youth Orchestra and an amazing math student, and just recently has begun to learn how to play guitar. We're very proud of you. And now, from the Creekview High School Choir is Director Tara Saicon, and Assistant Brian Murray is Austin Curley. Parents are Debbie and Pat Curley. Austin is a senior at Creekview and was named a Base Two in the Texas Allstate Men's Choir. Austin has been a member of the golf team, Young Life, and National Honor Society while at Creekview. He's graduating in the top 10% of his class and will be attending the University of Texas, where he will study business and economics. From the Ranchview High School Band, Director Chuck Moon and Assistant is Galen Cook. We have first, and I'm going to hopefully not miss any names, and spell them correctly, And parent is Jessica Cataraya. Amani is a sophomore at Ranchview, a sophomore, and has been a member of the region band since his eighth-grade year. He was selected both his freshman and sophomore years in the area band, and this year, he was selected as the fourth-chair bass clarinet player in the Allstate Band. Next, we have Armstrong Nawaka. And his parent is Rose Jadeka. Armstrong is a sophomore at Ranchview and was just inducted into the National Honor Society. He's been a member of the region band since seventh grade. He was a member of the area band both his freshman and sophomore years, and this is his second year he's made the Allstate Band. This year, he was selected as the third-chair euphonium for the Texas Allstate Band. And last, from Ranchview, is Jessica Chun. And the parent is Bea Young Soon Kwak. Jessica is a senior at Ranchview High School. She's been a member of the National Honor Society for three years and drum major of the Ranchview Marching Man for two years. She's been a member of the region band since seventh grade, and this is her second year to make state. This year, she was selected as third-chair in the Allstate Band. She'll be attending the University of Texas at Austin, majoring in chemistry. From the Newman Smith High School Orchestra, Directors Lamar Smith and Assistant Jessica Millbrant is Amber Wiseman. And parents are Carol M. Ron Wiseman. Amber is a senior at Newman Smith and was selected for the first time this year as a violist in the Allstate String Orchestra, which is incredibly hard to make. Amber is ranked number 10 in her graduating class and also a member of the Newman Smith Choir. She participated in the TIP program in CFB with the Polk Orchestra. Amber will be attending TCU in the fall and will major in music education. And next, from the Newman Smith High School Band, Director Bill Sentera and assistants Andy Ryan and Rob Parks. First is Amanda Bateman. And parents are Jean and Jenny Bateman. Amanda is a senior at Newman Smith and plays in the Smith Full Orchestra, the Smith Jazz Band, and the Smith Wind Symphony. She's a three-year Allstater in band and was selected this year to the Texas Allstate Jazz Band. Amanda is a two-year member of the DCI World Champion Blue Devils Drum and Bucacore out of Concord, California. Amanda was also named the Outstanding High School Performer at the TCU Jazz Festival and will be attending the University of North Texas studying trumpet performance, and she For a long time, I made my living playing trumpet. I'm so glad I don't do it anymore because she plays a lot better than I ever did. Next is Brett Wyatt. And parents are Susan and Randall Wyatt. Brett is a senior at Newman Smith and plays in the Smith Full Orchestra, the Smith Jazz Band, and the Smith Wind Symphony. Brett is a four-year Allstater and plays also in the Greater Dallas Youth Orchestra. This year, Brett was selected as the first-chair trombonist in the state and performs a principal trombone in the Texas Allstate Orchestra. Brett was also CFB's only male athlete to advance to the Texas State Track and Field Championships, where he placed fifth in shot put. He will be attending SMU this fall to study with John Kitzman of the Dallas Symphony Orchestra, and he will major in trumpet performance. And now, from the Newman Smith High School Choir, Director Robin Brockway Nichols and Assistant Clarice Gray Porter is Krista Schmidt. Parents are Donna and Paul Schmidt. For those that might not know, Paul is actually the head band director also at Prairie Middle School, and Donna is an incredible oboist and teaches some of our students also an oboe. Krista is a junior at Newman Smith and was selected to the Texas Allstate Choir. She's a member of the National Honor Society, plays also in the Newman Smith Band, was a soloist in the 2010 TMEA Honor Choir from Smith, and is a member of the Greater Dallas Youth Chorus. She was Marian this year in the musical The Music Man and is ranked in the top 10 of the junior class. She'll be attending Oberlin Vocal Institute this summer. Next is Nellie Manning. Parents are Leslie and Randy Manning. Nellie is a senior at Smith and a member of the National Honor Society, the National Spanish Honor Society, Newman Smith Choir President, and is graduating 16th in her class. Nellie's been selected to the Texas Allstate Choir for three years, and this year, received the Audie Hudgens Foster Scholarship, who was the first, I believe, director of fine arts in this district, followed by Ted Polk, and then my opportunity. She'll be attending the University of North Texas as a music education major and was one of only three singers to receive a choral scholarship to UNT. And last but not least, is Danny Coons. And the parent is Laura Coons. Danny is a member of the National Honor Society. He's first-team Allstate Academic Football Choir Officer and soloist in the 2010 TMEA Honor Choir from Smith. He's also a member of the Greater Dallas Youth Choir, the varsity football team, the varsity tennis, and a National Merit Scholar. Danny has been selected to the Texas Allstate Choir for three years and has scholarships from SMU. He'll be a double-major in business and music at SMU. I give you our Texas Allstate students.
Congratulations.
Congrats. Congrats. Still into it. That's one down. That was fine arts. Oh, that's nice, Coach. Wow.
It's a tough duty for two of you.
director, but this is the Ranchview Wind Symphony. Again?
Mr. Moon, thank you, Mac, two rows, I think.
Directors are Mr. Chuck Moon and Mr. Galen Cook, and the principal is Mr. David Hicks. Mr. Hicks, where are you? I saw you. Would you come up also? The Ranchview Wind Symphony is under the direction of Chuck Moon. Mr. Moon is completing his fifth year at Ranchview High School. Mr. Moon has taught for 18 years at both the middle school and high school levels. He had over 500 students in his middle school band and has been a consistent UL Sweep Six winner on all levels. Students under his direction have placed well in the region, area, and Texas Allstate Bands. Mr. Moon received his Bachelor of Music Education from the University of Texas at San Antonio, and in 1993, received his Master's Degree in Instrumental Conducting from Texas State University. He's been named three times to the Who's Who among America's teachers. The process...
Mr. Moon, thank you, Mac. Two rows, I think.
Now, I get the pleasure of introducing something that I never got to do as a band director. But this is the Ranchview Wind Symphony. Directors are Mr. Chuck Moon and Mr. Galen Cook, and the principal is Mr. David Hicks. Mr. Hicks, where are you? I saw you. Would you come up also? The Ranchview Wind Symphony is under the direction of Chuck Moon. Mr. Moon is completing his fifth year at Ranchview High School. Mr. Moon has taught for 18 years at both the middle school and high school levels. He had over 500 students in his middle school band and has been a consistent UL1 Act winner on all levels. Students under his direction have placed well in the region, area, and Texas All-State Bands. Mr. Moon received his Bachelor of Music Education from the University of Texas at San Antonio, and in 1993, received his Master's Degree in Instrumental Conducting from Texas State University. He's been named three times to the Who's Who among America's teachers. The process for getting to the finals for honor band in Texas are very rigid. Each band must submit a recording of their band to three levels. The first level is regionals. There are 28 regions in the state of Texas. You must come in first or second place in order to advance to area. From area, which consists of seven parts of the states, again, the top two are sent on to finals, which occur at the Texas Band Master Association Conference in San Antonio. There, a panel of five renowned Texas band directors listen to the recordings one final time and rank their performances. There are 189 3A schools in the state of Texas, and the Ranchview Wind Symphony placed second for the state of Texas for 3A honor band. I also want to mention, band directors from Barbara Bush Middle School, the feeder for Ranchview High School, are Mr. Darryl Crowder and Mr. Dave Henning. And the assistant director at Ranchview is Galen Cook. Thank you all for promoting musicians in a sixth-grade through 12th-grade curriculum. Congratulations to the conductors, students, and Mr. Hicks for bringing this honor to CFB.
Congratulations.
And they did a great job at our celebration.
Good yelling. And timely yelling.
Good job, guys.
Good job.
What a guy.
Got them nice little suits on.
Absolutely no disrespect to anybody. I have got the best job in this district. I get to work with the best people and the best kids. What a great job. This is Missy Head. She's the head of the department with our theater department, along with Laura McNary. And principal is Mr. Joel Lapuma. I didn't see if Mr. Lapuma is here. If you'll come up also, Mr. Lapuma. The Creekview High School Theater Department, under the leadership of Missy Head and Miss Laura McNary, competed in a very rigorous process to get to the state finals of the UL1 Act Play. Missy Head has competed at the state level 11 times, taking students from Creekview, Industrial, and Odessa High Schools. Missy is the UL Advisory Chair for the state of Texas, the Programming Chair for the Texas Educational Theater Association, and a recipient of the Southwestern Bell Teacher of Excellence Award. Miss Laura McNary is the Technical Theater Director at Creekview and has competed at the state level six of the eight years she's taught. She's the vendor chair for the Texas Educational Theater Association Conference. Both Missy and Laura host UL1 Act Play contests for the state each year, welcoming over 24 schools and plays to the Creekview campus each spring. Creekview has actually advanced 10 out of 13 years the school's been open. Creekview has won the championship twice, placed second four times, and placed third once. First, I want to introduce Mitchell Ferguson. Phil, step forward. This is the son. I had the pleasure of being in Austin when these young actors competed. It was absolutely amazing. Amazing. And you are unbelievable actor. And I'm not a very good actor, so don't say anything. Okay? He's the son of Jennifer and Keith Ferguson. If they're here. They are. Mitchell won Best Actor and the prestigious Samuel French Award, which signifies, get this, the most outstanding performer of the entire competition, not foray of the entire state. Next, I have Maddie Wright. She's the daughter of Whitney and Steve Wright. Maddie was selected for Honorable Mention Award for 1 Act Play. Congratulations. And Andrew McVey. He's the son of Jane and Matthew McVey. And Andrew was selected for an All-Star Cast Award. Congratulations. And next is Jenna Reeves. The daughter of Leslie and Mike Reeves. And here's another state winner. She was selected as the most outstanding technician in the entire state. This year, the Creekview 1 Act Play was Death of a Salesman, won the UL1 Act Play state championship on May 10. Additionally, the Creekview Theater placed fifth in the UL State Technical Design Competition in the group design category. Members of the design team include Kelsey Baker, Jeremy, I apologize already, Stavina Nava, and Jenna Reeves. Congratulations to Miss Head, Miss McNary, and the principal, Mr. Joel Lapuma, for achieving the highest award possible in UL1 Act Play. I present you the best of the best in our state.
Joe.
Good job, fellas. Looks sharp, too, by the way.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Good job, Patriots.
Are you finished?
Do it now? Is that all the recognition?
Ms. Klein, at this time, we'd, the administration would like to recommend that we move up item 2A, which is report by superintendent, and it's the Presentation on Student Achievement at Fine Arts. Since a lot of the fine arts staff are here, but we'd also like to recommend that the parents be released and the kids be released, and then the fine arts staff come in and be present for the presentation. So maybe take a look for a five-minute break.
Okay, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break. It is 7:41, and we'll come back at 7:46.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Well, I know some of you had to watch from outside, but what a, what a, what a group of students that represent this district. And it is very unusual to have that many students be all-state. When you say, "Mr. McDaniel," I mean, that's quite an accomplishment. And we know that the students got there with the help of their instructors and their teachers and their directors and their parents and all their friends that helped them get there. So we're very fortunate to have the supporting cast to all of those students to help them get there. At this time, I'm going to call Mr. McDaniel back up, and we felt it appropriate, while the fine arts staff was still here, to see their students be recognized, that we give our annual presentation on the great accomplishments from our Fine Arts Department in CFB ISD. So without any further ado, Mr. McDaniel, you're back on.
Thank you, Dr. Burns and President Klein. I got it right. We're glad to see you and members of the board. Dr. Burns, we thank you for the opportunity to present the status of Fine Arts in CFB. In the past few years, we've given an overwhelming amount of information that has justified the role that Fine Arts plays in student development. It can be accredited for success in everything that parents, teachers, and administrators want for their children in CFB, that being high academic achievement, social and emotional stability, and equitable opportunities in the workforce. CFB has enjoyed years of excellence in Fine Arts, including four years of being named the top 100 districts in the nation for music education by NAMM. We're proud to report that, once again, CFB has been named as the top one school districts in the nation for music education from 2011. Our students have been selected for state performing groups in choir, orchestra, band, 1 Act Play, and nationals in dance and drill team. There have been many award-winning paintings and art projects, performances by elementary groups, which have been recognized on the state level, winning speech and debate teams, as well as hundreds of amazing performances and displays from our schools across the district every year. The reason why our students excel is due to the amazing, dedicated team of Fine Arts educators we're fortunate to have in this district, our Fine Arts Super Team. Not only are these folks masters in their field of expertise, they understand that in our changing society, the side effects or the non-artistic skills that students develop through a sequential Fine Arts subject, area, are becoming as important to a child's education as the art itself. These teachers are in demand all over the state and nation for the expertise in their field. This slide gives just a small sampling of the incredible talent of these respected educators. The district goal of high achievement for all students is the perfect goal for the Fine Arts team. The four district objectives are used to meet classroom goals as well as having a huge impact on the academic and overall success of the students. Take a look how your Fine Arts teachers accomplish this goal. Objective one: continuously improving student achievement. The CFB Fine Arts team is full of master teachers, and those who have not yet reached that exclusive title are well on their way to achieving that goal for themselves. According to the professional goals that each teacher wrote at the beginning of the year, there's a common thread that establishes how these fine educators continue to improve student achievement. First, 100% of them indicated that fundamental skills and behaviors must be taught, emphasized, and practiced daily. They also recognize that the curriculum is a critical variable in effective instruction and is continually evaluated against the results. Low-performing students are encouraged and proper interventions are developed. Mastery is evaluated by specific, regular testing, and above all, these teachers never give up. Vivint Field Orchestra Director Mary Gibson and Turner High School Orchestra Director Kristi Myers are perfect examples of teachers who don't give up. Instead, they work harder. These two master teachers started Private Lessons Saturday, a program in which any middle school orchestra student could go and receive free private lessons from 9:00 to 12:00, two Saturday mornings a month during the first semester. The Turner High School Orchestra students helped in this project by assisting the middle schoolers with lessons and creating a vertical alignment in the orchestra program from 7th through 12th grade. This is an example of the dedication, time, and effort that makes our teachers so special and our kids so successful. Our teachers establish learning goals, not performance goals, essentially the difference between learning the steps to a dance and becoming a dancer. Through multiple forms of assessment, teachers track student progress towards mastery and high achievement. Objective two: continuously improve the learning environment. The teachers on our team present learning activities in knowledge-centered environment that develops students' abilities to have a deep understanding of concepts. This deep understanding is necessary for learners to be able to apply knowledge in a given situation and to transfer that knowledge to another subject or learning opportunity. Many teachers in the Fine Arts use a community-centered learning environment where students feel safe to ask questions and share ideals to help them understand and learn. A set of behavior norms is developed that contributes to successful learning within that environment. Social interactions combined with a set of norms within the community of learners will affect student success and how students make connections in situations beyond the classroom. Another way that our teachers enhance learning is through educational technology. CFB has provided important resources in the way of hardware and software, allowing teachers to make the environment more learner-centered. Not only does our team utilize educational technologies such as computers and smart boards daily, but they also use technology-driven equipment to specific performances and productions as well. Objective three: continuously improve operational effectiveness. Staff members are dedicated to helping every student achieve challenging state and local standards. All students are engaged in a rigorous course of study in which high standards and performance are clear, and when necessary, activities are modified and differentiated to prepare all students for college, community responsibilities, and/or the workplace. Principals can count on Fine Arts personnel to be flexibly structured to maximize the use of time and accommodate unforeseen events that may arise. In short, they are team players doing what it takes to make students successful in academics as well as in the arts. Objective four: continuously improve community and stakeholders support. Our teachers have overwhelmingly agreed that when families, schools, and the community work together towards common goals, the students benefit. The everyday processes such as consistency in grading and assessment, safe, clean classrooms, positive communication with parents and colleagues, teacher education through workshops and conventions, and teachers mentoring new teachers are all part of building healthy community support. The Fine Arts staff goes above and beyond to foster community and stakeholder support. Bands, drill teams, and other Fine Arts groups march in the Christmas Parade and the Martin Luther King Parade. There are cluster concerts, performances for retirement homes, and senior dinners by elementary groups, art shows in local banks and other locations, and many other community-related activities. There it goes. With CFB's diverse population, the arts can be a bridge and a resource for cultural awareness between families and schools. Performance events involve the entire community, building cognitive and developmental benefits for students of all socioeconomic status. These strong educators, who engage students in a sequential curricular program, are helping to improve student grades, test scores, dropout, self-esteem, and increase enrollment in post-secondary education. An example of community spirit involvement is the Carrollton Wind Symphony Christmas Concert featuring the Elementary District Honor Choir. Fourth and fifth grade students selected to participate from all elementary schools across the district. The Wind Symphony is under the direction of Jim McDaniel and Jim Owen, and the Honor Choir is under the direction of Susan McDaniel, Beverly Phillips, and LePelle Chat. So have we reached our goal of high achievement for all students? Check this out. Out of 24, oh, sorry. Out of 25,475 students in CFB, there are 22,472 students taking Fine Arts classes. That's not counting any doubles. This number includes our elementary students, which we think is very important to mention. We're very lucky to be in a district that recognizes the importance of a K-12 program in the Fine Arts. Let's start at the very beginning, a very good place to start. So the song goes. Our elementary music teachers not only teach skills of singing, performing, improvising, composing, and reading, but they have the unique ability to instill the desire to become lifelong learners in children. Music-like language is an accomplishment that distinguishes us as humans. Laura Ann Model and her fifth-grade students from Stark show their expertise on the orf instruments. Our elementary arts students allow students to express themselves through visual symbols and colors, a way of communicating feelings or ideas. It's the first step children take in learning to write, a visual interpretation of a story. For many reasons, art should not be thought of as a frill but as a valid and essential part of our education. Jody Knox at Kent Elementary and her students make storytelling dolls. Jody Knox at Kent Elementary and her students make storytelling dolls, another cultural connection to reading.
How is what you're doing the same as what the problem with you is doing, making your storyteller dolls? You're putting babies on yours too, right? How many of you, how many of your parents read stories to you or told you stories when you were little? Still, babies still do? How many you think you might do that when you have babies? Aleah has some very...
Did you know that sixty-three students in art received Superior Medals in the Regional Vase Competition? That the Dallas Central Appraisal District will house an all-district show of three hundred works of CFB art, including students' works from kindergarten through twelfth grade? And that our art students had work displayed in the DMA, the Dallas Music and Arts, in the Young Masters Competition. In dance, did you know that Creekview and Smith co-produced CFB Dance Exchange? That the Creekview Chevals won Best in Class and Most Outstanding Dance Team at the American Drill Team School Mavericks Competition? And that Smith student, Adam Wadyski, was selected to attend a National Dance Convention in New York? Did you know that nine students from CFB were selected for the All-State Band or Orchestra? That thirteen bands and sixteen orchestras from CFB made sweepstakes at UL? That the Ranchview High School Band was the runner-up for Honor Band for the state of Texas? That sixty-eight students made All-Region Band or Orchestra? That the Creekview Band was selected to perform this year at Midwest for 2011-12? And that the Newman-Smith Jazz Ensemble won both the TCU and the UTA Jazz Festivals? An example of high achievement features four-year All-State student, Jack Pena, in the Creekview Full Orchestra. He is absolutely one of the finest bassoons I've ever heard. Did you know that four CFB students were selected for the All-State Choir? That twenty choirs from CFB made sweepstakes at UL? And ninety-one students were selected for High School and Middle School Region Choir? And I want to insert here, we found out this last week, that Blaylap Middle School has been selected as the Honor Choir, Men's Honor Choir, under the direction of Brad Curley. Brad, you here? They will perform at the TMEA Conference in San Antonio in February. Here's an example of what can be done if basic fundamentals are practiced every day, from sight-reading practice. Those students had never seen any of that music before, and this is what they can end up with. That was Long, by the way, Choir. And that was the Middle School Region Choir, of which one-third of this choir is from CFB. High achievement, I believe so. Did you know that One Act Play Competition, RL Turner, took third place and was named as the alternate to district? Creekview and Smith won district and moved to area competition. And the Creekview won area and then went on to win state, One Act Play and foray. That the Creekview Debate Team placed six out of twenty-four schools at the Texas Forensics Association State Meet. That Smith Debate Team took second place in public forum debate at the Plano Tournament. And that RL Turner seniors received thirty combined callbacks to colleges from California to Maine at the Northeast Drama Auditions. Did you know that ten million one hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars in scholarships have been awarded in Fine Arts? And that eighty-eight percent of our students in CFB have remained eligible all year long? I think that's earned a round of applause. And finally, this graph shows comparison of band, orchestra, and choir students taking the SAT. You'll notice that the TMEA All-State students and the CFB students' scores have increased over the past three years, while the national average and the Texas average have declined. We, the Fine Arts staff, are very appreciative of the opportunities that CFB has provided and for allowing us the opportunity to share our passion, as we strive for excellence and high achievement for all students. Ladies and gentlemen, I give you the Fine Arts Team, if you'll stand.
Mr. McDaniel, you entertained a few questions here from the board.
Sure.
Anyone have any questions? I was just gonna say, Mr. McDaniel, our district does offer so many opportunities for all of our students from K through twelve, and it really is amazing what they're able to accomplish, and it's also due to their parents. I see some parents still here. But also so much the staff and the atmosphere the whole way through.
Just an awesome presentation.
Thank you.
Awesome kids.
Great job.
Well, it's been fifteen years I've gotten to serve this district, and one honor. Thank you for having us here.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here with us tonight. We're gonna take a ten-minute recess. It's eight oh five. And we're gonna come back at eight fifteen, and if anybody wants to stay for athletics, please do. Otherwise, we're gonna do a little trade-out here. Thank you.